Good evening, everybody. This is the Planning Board meeting on December 5th, 2024 at 7:00 P. M. We are being recorded by Area 58 and it can be viewed on YouTube. And it can be viewed on YouTube. The tonight's agenda is appointments including 24 SPR, 2244 Arnold Ware site plan review application for MAP 73 lot A Plymouth, sorry, lot 7A Plymouth Street. PBSB-24-1, 300 Plymouth Street, Jeremy Jamulus of Cape Cod Cafe for a special permit for a window sign. And 22-sub-226 Hilda Lane for approval of definitive planned subdivision modification. We have discussions, deal your way. We have correspondence, mail package for Planning Board from Mark Pierce. And we have other business, any other unscheduled business. And bills from the Express newspapers. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Second.
All those in favor. So first, oh, and then present is Rick Mary, myself, Amy Truitt, and Brendan Elliott. We have a secretary on Zoom, I believe. Danielle? Or maybe not. Oh, good. Sorry, you were on mute. Now I can see you. It wasn't showing you before. Okay. So first off, we have 24 SPR, 2244 Arnold Ware for site plan application. And that we need to give an extension. Apparently the, or talk about giving an extension, the applicant submitted a request for an extension on November 27th, 2024. He's hired an architect, but it's going to take time to get a full set of plans. Thank you. So 60 days from 9, 21, 22. And then 31 is 53, so 7. You have it as the 5th, I have it as the 7th. Because including the 31s, can I mark that as the 7th? Danielle? Yeah, I think that the extension goes to February 7th. From the 9th, because it's.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, I think we just missed a couple 31s.
Yes, that's fine.
Alright, I'm just gonna mark that off. Okay. Can I get a motion to extend or any discussion on the extension of Arnold Ware?
A motion to extend.
Just a motion to extend, mod if they.
No, a motion to extend petition number 24-SPR-244 for Arnold Ware.
For 60 days till February 7th.
For 60 days until February 7th, 2025. How exciting.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the list is PBSB-24-1, 300 Plymouth Street, Jeremy Jamulus.
Yes.
You're up.
I'm from the Cape Cod Cafe. We recently, a few months ago, put up some new signage to drive more foot traffic and some people could see us from the street better.
Are you the owner, Jeremy?
I am one of the owners.
So you're Jeremy Jamulus?
I am.
Okay, just for the record. Okay, great.
So we recently put up some signage and we were told that the signs took up over 30% of the window, which is not allowed in the bylaws. We respect the bylaws. However, you know, we asked for, you know, a special, a special permit to allow the signage. We feel it, it looks nice. We haven't gotten any complaints. We've got many compliments on it, actually. And respectfully, we ask that.
Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing because I neglected to do that, sorry. Notice of public hearing. The Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 5th, 2024 at 7:00 P. M. In the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts. On the application submitted by Jeremy Jamulus of Cape Cod Cafe for a special permit to put up a window sign. Said to be located at 300 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 02338, 02338, as shown on Assessors' map, 63 lot 7. And the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds Book 52081, page 236. A special permit pursuant to 167-1315 windshield signs. Window signs shall not exceed more than 30% of the window area in which they are displayed. Property is owned commercial. File PBSP24-1. Can I have a motion to open that hearing?
Motion to open the hearing?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any pictures of the sign or anything? Do you have any display to show?
Yeah, I do have before and after pictures.
Okay.
I don't, I personally, I don't understand how it's over 30%. I'm not sure how that, how that number was, I assume that's the sign in question. I don't know how that was determined or what.
Do you have a copy for each of us?
No, I do not.
Oh, okay. We'll just look and pass around.
30%. That's 30% of what?
Yeah, that what of the window.
What?
So.
Mass building code doesn't state clearly how, how it should be judged or determined. The only thing I could find is, you know, in a legal law book. If you go by that, it doesn't take up 30%. But even if it did, I would still ask for a variance because, you know, we feel it looks nice. It's not detrimental to the neighborhood. It's just trying to increase our foreended presence in the, in the area.
I'm just gonna read the.
That's the new one?
That's, that's what it would, no.
That's the old one? That's the new one? And that's the one that they're saying is illegal?
Correct.
So I'm gonna, I love it. Who's they?
I, I got a call from.
It's like when my wife is like, they say we should put the kid down. I'm like, who's they? They're not here. What are we talking about? It's our kid. We'll put him down when we want.
I was notified by Ed Bailey, who I assume is the assigned sign officer.
Zoning enforcement agent.
He said he got one, a single complaint by a resident. And that's where it started.
Okay.
We're probably here.
Okay.
I don't mean, I'm, I'm, I promise you, I'm not being facetious or rude in any way. Do, do we have the size of the door and the size of the same exact sign that you had up there before?
Square footage wise, I, I don't have the information.
Yeah.
I would measure the windows and then measure what the sign is and then, yeah, that's what I would do.
It, okay.
So unfortunately, where it's a special permit, we need four people to be here in order to even get you, like, it has to be a four to zero vote.
For selectmen?
No, with the planning board, yeah. So tonight, we only have three people in attendance and therefore we can't actually do this tonight. So I apologize wholeheartedly to you. I think that the other board members are gonna say the same thing.
I'm gonna tell you to take a measuring tape all the way down to the centimeter and go, are you freaking kidding me? This is like, uh, hold on. So, please, sorry. I just think it's.
Well, even if it's a 30, even if it's a 30 square, you know, the 30%, you still have a special permit for a window sign. Still has to be a special.
Oh, okay.
This would be the third or fourth window sign that we've installed since we've opened. You take them down, you have different things up here and there, and we've never heard a thing.
You would have had to apply for a special permit to put up one or sign when you first moved in, though, wouldn't you?
I would assume so, you know, the, getting the proper license, business licenses and things like that. And, you know, we've had, you know, we have multiple businesses in multiple towns and this has just never come up.
Yeah.
Like similar locations have similar signage and everything like that. And other towns, Rainham, Bridgeport.
I have to move this because there's not appropriate things coming out of my mouth under, under my breath. I, I, yeah, I mean, you missed that. So if there was already a special permit done the first time.
Was there? I don't remember. I don't recall that.
I just know when we first opened, there was, you know, you go through, you go through permits and you get signed off on. There was window, there was window stickers at that time, too. We've since taken them down, put new ones up, taken them down, put new ones up, and this is the first time.
The only thing that the window sign bylaw states, let me just make sure I'm reading the right one, 167-1315, yeah. Window signs. It says 15 window signs, period. Window signs shall not exceed more than 30% of the window area in which they are displayed. There is, there is a bylaw that states you need a permit to have window signs, just if they're over 30%. So I would do the measuring and see if.
I mean, just the eye test, I, I, it doesn't seem to me that it's over 30%. You know, I would argue, how, how, how was, how was it determined in the first place that it was over 30%, which brings me here.
And it looks like those windows do count.
Window sign, special permit if you're commercial.
Oh, okay. But in the window sign itself, all it says is that, is this.
Yeah, it can't be more than 30 square feet.
Right.
But then your regular signs are 40, I think. And then you get into the size of the letters and everything else if you really want to.
Because what I would do, just out of, well, I would like, I would not count the circle, the inside of the circle, the R, or the D, or the A, or the P, or the A on the bottom. Let's count all of it. All that space that's negative space.
Obviously, yeah.
It's rock and roll. I'm down for that. That's ridiculous. So, I mean, obviously, we have to assign by the letter of the law. If we don't have a special permit for it, right, then obviously we, we should have a special permit on file for a window.
We can't, we can't vote on it tonight anyways.
That would only be required if it was over 30%, right?
No, you know, you have to, just window sign, window sign period has to have a special permit.
So regardless of size.
Right. It's just if it's, if it's over 30%, then it's a special exception versus just getting a, the special permit.
Special, special.
Special, right, right.
So just question is, I have, if somebody's told the sign is too big or whatever, shouldn't a person have told you what space it's over?
Yeah, it's probably an anonymous poster on Facebook. It's one of those.
There was a town official that contacted.
You would have think the town official would have said you, you're over by 10 square meters or whatever.
Yeah.
So that you guys could have something to react to, right?
Right.
Rather than, you know, having, you know, from this one aside.
My, my thought is, and correct me if I'm wrong, even though we can't, I mean, obviously we can't vote on it tonight, but just as, just as input is, I think that if we need to figure out whether you had a special permit in the first place, and if you did, then, if you did, then make them prove it. Right? And if you didn't, if you didn't, then we have to do it the right way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we would absolutely do that. And I think we all agree that it, that it looks nice and it's an improvement. You know, we're just trying to drop, you know, bring business into the, into the town. So.
Okay, so do you mind coming back on the 19th when we might have a quorum to actually handle this?
No, well, somebody, you know, if I'm available, absolutely. Or if it's another representative, absolutely.
Okay, then I would, I'd stand a motion to, I mean, a continuation of the hearing to December 19th at 7:00 P. M.
How do we find out if he had a special permit in the first place?
We can, he can go to the building office to find, actually, it would be the planning board office. Let me peruse. I don't know if this, Caesar.
Yeah.
Do we have all of our documents online yet?
Maybe Danielle in that, to you specifically.
One that you're looking for?
Do we have 300 Plymouth Street, like, the whole file, like, scanned into the system?
Yeah, so if you go into the file, see the R drive.
Yeah.
It should say on the left side of this, it says S drum and R.
Yeah, she, she's on the, she's on that folder. So this is everything.
Thank you.
But that looks like date modified. Is that date modified just because?
I think it did, I have her name.
Oh, okay.
Danielle, did you happen to search Cape Cod files to see if they had a special permit previously?
To be honest, Ed was kind of handled it and just hand it over to us.
Okay.
So, so why don't we do this? Because we can't vote on it today. It's just kind of a waste of time to do it. Between now and the 19th, let's find out whether you had a special permit to begin with. We'll find out, we'll let you know ahead of time. And then that way, at least when you come back on the 19th, it's either a, can we get this thing off the desk? Or can we apply for a special permit?
Gotcha. And I'll do the math, too, on the square footage.
Yeah. And it looks like, like I said, that sign, it looks like it's, like, each individual letter. It's not one big sign. So as far as I'm concerned, each one of those letters are its individ, own individual sticker. So any space that it's not covered by white is window.
I agree. Thank you.
If it's up for interpretation, of course.
Is there a motion to continue the hearing for file PBSP24-1 to December 19th at 7:00 P. M.?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome.
Everybody wants more business in this town, but they want to make it fucking hell for them to get in here.
Unbelievable.
Next on the agenda is 22-sub-226 Hilda Lane for approval of definitive planned subdivision modification.
Joe Webby, Webby Engineering. With me is Scott Burgess. And we were here a couple of weeks ago and the planning board wanted some more time to investigate, or look at the file, especially to look for a peer review, a report from a peer review. I don't know how you made out on that.
I believe that we were looking into having a peer review done. Am I correct?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I think we were supposed to have a peer review done.
Yeah, you were. You were. You ordered it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a.
Danielle, did we receive a, sorry, I misunderstood what you meant. The peer review from the 24th of September conservation plan of this year?
Do you have, we have it?
Yeah, do we have a peer review back from Mr. Brennan?
I don't want to.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, your peer review would not have been from a conservation, would have been from a.
Yeah, Pat Brennan, right?
Yeah, Pat Brennan.
Right, but from, from the same plan that was used at that meeting.
You confuse them, you know.
So the plans that were modified and that conservation, you said approved, right?
Yes, we have an order of conditions, right.
Okay, for the road or the, or the, or the lots?
Just the road.
Just the road, not the lots. So you're asking us to do a subdivision modification on conservation only doing the road?
No, not on conservation at all. This is planning board. What we, what we asked for is to, this, this subdivision has been previously approved in 05. And what we're asking for is that we can modify the roadway, basically to shorten it up by some 200 feet.
Right.
So that all our work for the roadway is on this side of the wetlands. And that's, that's the plan that we submitted to, to the planning board.
Right.
There's a planning board has a roadway modification.
And what did conservation say about crossing wetlands?
Well, you're not crossing.
We're not crossing.
Stand aside of it.
But on the lots, what did he say about that?
They, they didn't act on that yet because they sent, well, not Scott, but. Yeah, Donnie Bracken is going through the ZBA to see if he can get a, a variance or a special permit to have a common driveway. But that has nothing to do with us and the roadway. And, well, in my mind, it has nothing to do with.
Okay, so then we'll work on the waivers, which we still need to hear back from Brian.
Right, yes.
So the waivers that you're asking us for are. Just to be clear, like, for everything today, right? So the waiver, and, and please let me know if there are anything missing or added, okay? We have to allow the pavement to be 22 instead of 30 feet wide.
Yes.
Okay. Allow Cape Cod burns instead of Cape Cod, I'm sorry, instead of granite curbing?
Yes.
To allow no sidewalks instead of one as approved?
Yes.
To allow heavy-duty, high-density polyethylene HDPE pipe instead of concrete piping?
Yes.
And to allow utility pools overhead instead of underground. And you are doing town water and not well.
We are doing town water, yes, yes. Yeah, I just know, we're not looking for.
What, what do you guys have to say about this?
I'm gonna defer to you. I don't know, some waivers they're looking at before, we, some of the butters are here, I think, from previous meeting, wanting sidewalks. And didn't really see the need of it. Because at the time, I think it was just two lots you were gonna add. Now we have four.
My thing was always, well, originally, I think it was five or seven.
Yeah, but that was with sidewalks and a 30-foot road and everything else. So we're narrowing the road and eliminating the sidewalk. Underground utilities, but you're putting in a main with a hydro, which is, which is a good thing.
And the, the road's under 500 feet. So I technically don't need it.
Right.
So I'll do it anyway.
Yeah, not a bad idea.
Okay, Brian?
I mean, I just don't, I just remember the conversation the la, a year ago when we were having the, the butters, I forget who it was, but they were talking about wanting the sidewalks. So now we're shorting the road and doing the sidewalks, but.
In my opinion, what do you need a sidewalk for?
Should we open up to a butts?
Yep.
Diane Bradford, 131 Hayward Street on the corner of Hilda Lane and that Hayward Street. If anyone's walked down Hayward Street, you probably break your leg, okay? So we, I mean, a new road put in, it's gonna be smaller. Right now, they tried to get town trash.
Okay, she's on the opposite corner of you?
Yeah, she's on Hilda Lane.
Okay.
And they couldn't get the town trash to come because of the smallness of the street. So she's paying more money for their trash to be able to come. I just feel that I asked Mr. Webby to come and show us, just measure it, the 22 feet versus 30, just to show us. Just, you know, being kind. And no one's ever came to my door. He's there for his son. His sister lives on the street. You know, is that too wrong so we can kind of get an idea? I don't think that's too much to ask. And we'd like a place to walk. And if the sidewalk is on the bylaws, why not give it to us? We said no to the, I mean, the underground electricity. Give us something. Okay, it's Hayward Street with all these trucks that are gonna be coming in to do this project is gonna be atrocious. The road's gonna be worse. I just feel like something should be given. We're not getting the pretty nice burns at the bottom of the street. We're getting the other ones. You know, I just think they can give a little bit.
Okay.
And I'd also like to see, can someone kind of explain this road now? Because it looks to me that two house lots, but there's gonna be two more back there. And how, if the street's not gonna go that far, how are you gonna get to that? One and two. I, I, can Mr. Webby come up and kind of show us where the street is?
So it looks like.
Is the street?
Where the, yeah, Hilda Lane, the one you're gonna make.
Right here.
Yeah.
And then that's the, that's the joint driveway that's gonna go to lot one and lot two. That's.
Those lots have frontage on the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
And where the end of the closed house is?
Lot one and lot two.
Okay.
So they're gonna come in this drive, if I'm right, I mean, I don't know.
But we're actually trying to, the conservation has asked us not to do a crossing at this spot. Oops, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I can fix it if you got it.
So conservation has requested that we do the crossing right at this spot, which is the narrows. So what they're, now, we, we are not having any part of that, not any part of it. But that's being done by another engineer that's creating the, a crossing there across lot 17. So, but that, but again, all we're talking about tonight is the roadway. Well, also, I mean, I'll ask him for any other questions.
Are you in front of, do you have a hearing in front of zoning yet?
No, I believe it's Monday, but I'm not sure.
Monday, eight.
It's scheduled for Monday?
That's why we'd like to get an approval tonight so they, they know we're good on the cul-de-sac.
My idea on that would be that we would actually see before we actually approve this, that we would see if the variance would be granted first.
We're dealing just with the road, nothing to do with the house lots.
Well, if you can't do that, then it's all for naught. And I, I feel as though the whole project depends upon that. So in my eyes, I don't know how the other board members feel here tonight, but my, my feeling would be, number one, you, so far, you can't cross any of the wetlands without going to conservation. Two, you have a common driveway issue, which is against our bylaws. You're asking for a stream of, of waivers from our subdivision control. I mean, there, there's a lot. It's, so if you get into it, our job is to make sure that the residents are not detrimentally challenged. And, and to me, there's a lot of waivers being asked for. That's why. And, and conservation hasn't even said that you can cross the wetlands to build a house back there yet.
Yeah, I believe that, yeah.
No, they haven't. It actually says it on the, it says it right on your order of conditions that you cannot do a wetlands crossing. It says it right on it.
Well, it said we weren't, we didn't get an, and the order condition does not have a crossing. That's exactly right.
Yes, I know.
May I say that I, I don't think the subdivision is in any way in jeopardy. The only thing in jeopardy is Mr. Burgess is gonna lose a lot. If, if the ZBA does not give him a common driveway, he's gonna lose a lot. But that doesn't change the roadway. The roadway is still roadway gonna be for, for this, but for one less lot.
There's still a couple of lots on the roadway without going through the wetland.
That's correct, yeah, yeah. Well, we, we can easily, easily get this lot, this lot, and we are allowed one crossing under the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. The question really is, according to the, to the Conservation Commission, is we have to take the shortest way. You know, in other words, the shortest way across the wetlands is not here where we had originally designed it, but it's right there. This way, we could keep each lot have its own access, its own driveway. So that's what we're, not, not finding, but that's the issue we have. If we do the crossing here, that lot is still a lot. This one would not be. So it's really, it's in Mr. Burgess's jeopardy, but the roadway's not gonna change.
I understand that, but with the waivers and things of that nature and a butters here stating different things, would, would your client be willing to put in a sidewalk?
If I gotta put a sidewalk in, I'll put a sidewalk in.
What's the?
The answer to that is yes.
Yeah. What's, what's the difference between, and I'm gonna ask you, what's the difference with this, the heavy-duty, high-density versus concrete? Is there?
Yeah, nobody uses concrete.
Well, they use concrete, but using a lot of plastic. You didn't see that on tour, they use nothing but plastic.
So that's not, that's not like a deal breaker?
DPW, it's plastic.
If I could, if I could address the Cape Cod burns as opposed to granite curbing, the highway survey of DPW doesn't want these curves because they always, they destroy their plows.
Right.
Yeah, so they, they really don't want the standing curves. They want Cape Cod.
Yeah, that's more of an aesthetics thing in these ways.
The overhead wires is only because we, it's already partially overhead already.
So the only other thing is if you throw in a sidewalk, then the 22 feet opposed to the 30.
Yeah, 22. Which I think is the same, was I think, somebody was talking about deal your way. I think that one is about 22.
Not a good example.
I know, but that's.
That was on Cape Cod.
Use any other subdivision, any one but that one. But, your point is proven on that, right?
Can you go over and point out where the road would be, please?
You mean literally on the ground?
Yeah.
Piece of shit.
Okay, can we have that done?
Yeah, well, let's, let's take it all the way.
All right, I think that we should do that, um, we, I should make sure, um, and Danielle, you have any, can we make sure that PGB does a peer engineering of what we have in front of us?
Yeah, do you know if there's any money in here?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Do you know if there's any money in here, no?
Um, do you?
I think.
There was, I think I put two thousand bucks on it, I think there's like five hundred left from the.
But you, you would, you would refill it, right?
From the peer, peer review that.
Yeah.
He would refill it.
Okay.
Um.
So it's the sidewalk is the.
Can you tell me where the money went?
So, I think that, if, so, so that, then.
He didn't have a peer review, where did the money go?
Well, this is all changed now, from what we did the peer review on.
Does it go?
Yes.
Well, the, I, I think the, well, we, I'm not gonna address that, I don't know what the, the peer review did, but I do know that the big thing. It always is the big thing is drainage, and I do know that.
The drainage is also.
Yeah, we have not enlarged the road, it's always, the road is still the same, same road that, uh, that Amory, uh, not Amory anymore, but, uh.
PGB.
They designed, yeah.
So why don't we do this, why, my thought process is, if Mister Webby can go over and meet with the butters and point out where the road's gonna be, maybe like. For anybody who can't be there.
Well, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, well, you, you gotta remember, we're gonna put stakes, and you're gonna try to drive down there, not you, but, uh, honey and my son.
Well, we just mean so that they can see it.
And the sidewalk would be just.
Well, no, it's about, if I stake this, if I stake the road, and you say, okay, here's four feet, then you, you'll know where the sidewalk is, sure.
So they'll take pictures and stuff, can you do that?
Otherwise, it, it's just gonna get too confusing to.
You know what I mean, though, let's just smooth it over, talk about the sidewalk thing, and you said you would do that if that was the deal breaker, correct?
Yeah.
Let's go see what happens on Monday, prayers for you, and, um, and come back on the nineteenth. So I'd like, I, 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 I would entertain a motion to continue this to December nineteenth at seven PM.
May I just say one more thing, but I agree with that?
Yes.
Uh, we're, we're proposing, we're thinking right now of putting a sidewalk on the south side.
Right, I think that's what we had talked about before, right?
Just so, yeah, we don't wanna have, uh, we don't wanna have to shake anything more.
So with the, with the twenty-two feet of pavement, and the, so the sidewalk can be away from the pavement more.
That's correct.
Is there room to maybe put some trees in between or something, maybe, you know, cause you got more of a strip there, cause I see a lot of times they have a two-foot strip to stick trees in it, and then. Over the years, the trees, the roots are growing up through the sidewalk, you know, um, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Well, I, I.
Gotta dress up a little bit, you know?
I just prefer to have a little bit of a space between the road and sidewalk.
Yeah, but the road's narrower, oh, yeah, yeah, but the road's narrower, then maybe get the sidewalk through a little bit, right, yeah.
Diane.
I do have, so the street itself would be paved?
Yeah.
And how does the drainage work? We've had a drought, a, you know, pretty good drought, with one rainstorm, that's Hilda Lane.
Can you show me?
And it gets, I can show you how it floods, so my worry is, are we gonna have it look like Hayward Street?
Well, not once it's cleanly paved, I mean, they'll, they'll, they'll grate it all, so that the, the drainage goes where it's supposed to go.
And where is the drainage going to then?
Wherever the.
The drainage basin's already been approved.
Yeah, wherever the drainage basin, so the reason why it's catching like that is cause it's all uneven, it's not graded properly, so once it's graded properly.
Eleven days drainage.
Yeah.
And now, the drainage basin, when we were at the conservation meeting, they said if that was to overflow, it was gonna go into the river?
Yeah, yeah, well, it goes into the.
But the river flows into Hayward Street, that's my worry.
Okay.
There's a lot of worries here, and I know it's taken, I, I watched them, you know, the last meeting, and you had said that this has gone on and on and on.
Yeah.
But it's not our fault, there's been basic things that need to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been at meetings where no one else shows up, and so that's why a lot of the time this happens.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna rush it, I want all the answers, and we deserve all of them.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so, PR engineering, agree to sidewalks, see what engineer, I'm sorry, what zoning says. And, um, I'd like clarification from conservation telling us exactly what's going on with their wetlands crossing issue.
There, there is no issue, there's nothing before conservation right now.
This is just for the road.
Right, I understand, but like, this is a subdivision modification, so just the road doesn't clarify the rest of it, it leaves a very big open piece.
Well, isn't that.
This is a modification.
Isn't that a good thing?
Well, uh.
You know what I mean, I.
Well, well, we need to have a finished product in order to sign off on it, so that we can understand, we need to know what's gonna happen, we can't just be like, alright, the road's okay. And then have no idea what's gonna happen with the rest of the lots. Because right now, it's either gonna be another one or another two, and that might not happen, and you might cross here, and other things might change, so.
But again, that's not a planning board issue.
It's.
The planning board is here.
It is, because this is a subdivision modification, this isn't a road modification, this is a subdivision modification, which includes the lots. And includes the frontage, and includes what, all of the information, I mean, I'll open up chapter two thirty-five and we can talk about all of it.
You may do that at your own time, but, but there, there is many times we have just developed roadways. And then came in with ANIs after the roadway is built.
Well, that's different.
Right, but I mean, I, I am, I know it's, it's a difference, but basically, we're just talking about constructing a, a definitive subdivision.
Which, which I think, when done properly, is you guys would like to have a paved road as well, right, so. Um, it's hard, cause I, I see both, both sides here of like, we, we gotta get the road done, right? And whether they develop the last two lots or not, we, let's, let's make sure the road gets done the right way, specifically with what's on our agenda for discussion next.
If the road gets put in and they don't get those two lots, and that's.
That's on them, right.
It, it is, it's also the town's problem, so we have issues from not following, so it's not just about the road, it's about where the lots layout. Cause, I mean, like, this is chapter two thirty-five right here, and we can talk about all of this, because this is what we're supposed to. Approximate lines and dimensions of lots, and approximate radii of curved property lines in each subdivision. The subdivider shall furnish a topographical ma- map of all parts of the subdivision. Such topographic ma- map shall show contours at interval levels of, I mean, I could read on and on and on and on, but right there, I just said. That we need to know where the lot dimensions are, and that's part of subdivision control. Van.
Got a question, um.
Can you just identify?
Phone representation, if you're gonna change.
Identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Van Donnelly, Cranberry Drive, just one question, is that, does someone change the piping from concrete to flat, you mentioned it earlier? Is that been approved by the highway for structural integrity of the road? Cause I don't know what the structural integrity is of the piping versus the concrete, and, uh, that's the only thing that I would raise an issue to, and I don't know the answer to it, but.
Well, I think that's an answer for you, for the town's engineer.
Well, did they do that?
Their review.
They're gonna do that in the peer review.
There you go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so, if we were to just go down the list, right, so twenty-two to thirty is gonna be addressed by staking it out, right? And then obviously, from there, you can figure out the, you're not gonna double stake the, the sidewalks, you can say, this is the side that the sidewalk's gonna be, right? Cape Cod berms instead of the granite curbing, if you're gonna do the sidewalk, agree to the sidewalk on, you said the south side?
Yeah, we think that, uh, we'd rather have it on that side, uh, that way we don't interfere with honey's driving.
And then.
It'll be easy to grade.
The HDPE pipe instead of concrete will come back from our engineer, and then the butters, you guys already. Um, cons- not conceded, that's not the right word, but agreed to, um, doing the overhead wires instead of underground, that was kinda the give in order to get. The, the sidewalk, so I think the peer review is gonna bring us back what we need to be able to do, what we need to do to move forward with everybody happy.
A- a- and that you'll show them where the lot, I mean.
No, I'm gonna show them twenty-two feet wide down, going down, down the road.
Yes, thank you, okay.
So why don't we do that, order the peer review, and then when they go to conservation, conservation will tell them what they gotta do next, we'll have our peer review on the nineteenth, and then we can have the conversation, assuming all requirements are met on that.
Yeah, and we're gonna need a bond as well, for the road.
Okay.
Just so that you're aware, um, okay, so, motion to.
Is this gonna be, is this gonna be a town road, a town proved road?
Yeah, if it's gonna be a town road, you'd have to bond, but it's not, you're kinda.
If it's gonna be private, you don't have to worry about that.
Are you gonna be keeping it a private road?
We'll have to see what the people that are building those, what they, what they wanna do.
We can't do that, so.
Well, I can.
No, it, it's either a private road or it's gonna be a public road, and.
Private road.
It's a private road.
Done, private.
So not, never to be plowed by the town, or taken care of.
No, I don't know who plows it now.
Well, we'll have to look into that.
If I may, I think there'd be, there's gonna be a covenant, that the, the town, the planning board is gonna, uh, covenant, and it's in agreement. With, with Mister Burgess and yourself, and I think what you're gonna find, when you write your covenant of, you're gonna say that something of the sort. That you can't build on any lots until you get lots released by the planning board. And typically, a planning board will not release any lots, at least until the base code is in.
Well, usually we.
Then that's the time you get to post a bond.
Usually we have a bond.
Yeah, so you post a bond, make sure the road gets done.
That's where you post a bond. Because others, uh, he can't, he can't do any building, he can't get a building permit unless you have a road.
Yeah. We used to do it all the time in subdivisions, you just put the base down, you build everything, and then you do the finish, probably like, take a last one or two lots.
Yeah.
So all the machinery.
Depends on timing.
Concrete trucks, everybody's going down, and you don't wanna do any.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know, but.
But, you know, the problem with, we have other roads in town, they never get finished, because they didn't have the bond, they didn't do it the right way, so. That's not gonna happen again, no big deal.
So we'll do those things that we agreed to, um, and can I, and, um, have a motion to, um, continue the, I'm sorry, the, uh. Subdivision modification site plan till December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM. So move it.
Second.
All those in theater?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nineteenth.
Thank you.
We got it done? One way or another? Or not? One way or another.
On a private road, it would be.
The residents?
No, no, some, it's, 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 sometimes, albeit, but it's all to the center, but a lot of times, a private like this, he'd own, you know, he'd own the road.
He would?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I mean, I don't know how that works, I mean, I, I live in a two-lot subdivision, I own the road, I own the road, and the other lot has it right away.
It's already. We should probably.
But, you know, that's.
Can we discuss that and the next thing too, because, um, there, there was an issue when this fall first came about.
Yeah.
Um, a big issue, um, where he, um, said people in that couldn't use the road, he said, you can't use the road.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, he came to my system, you know, I'm not involved a lot, my sister came home, she goes, you know, and he said to her, you, you built your house wrong. And she said, well, she said, your house has to face the street, you know, one.
Hayward Street.
Hayward Street, and I wouldn't let you drive in this road, she said, my sister come to my cousin, he also, he knows, he said, let him do it, and we'll tell him what's going on. But she said, I said, how can, what are we gonna do, that red man's gonna come here, what are we gonna get our lawn and get another road to go to? And drive our car into the window, if he can, if he's, it's a problem, it's a problem, he couldn't let us drive.
But then he told you had to pay some money.
Yeah.
A toll.
To build the road, I, I have this money.
Watering a hundred.
If I have a hundred thousand dollars, I wouldn't build this house.
Well, that's maybe something else to bring up, it's like, well, I mean, most times you put in the subdivision, when it's all done, the town accepts the road, and the town, you know, takes care of it, plows it, maintains it, all that. But then a lot of times, it's a private road.
And you didn't only do it to him, to water it up, one of the meetings, he also did it to Mister Webby's son. He said his lawyer's told him, uh, for the, um. It was legal that he could charge them, I can't lie, nobody used the road.
To, to use the.
That just shows you why we're a little nervous.
No, of course, of course, well, let's, let's.
But if you, are you, you have frontage on Hilda, or you have frontage on Hayward?
Hayward.
So you don't even use Hilda Lane?
No, it's all.
Yeah, I visit her a lot.
Huh?
I visit her a lot.
That's, that's why you need a sidewalk.
And besides, they're gonna move their funds to go to the river, and our land to dump the water in the river, and if the river flooded in the winter, the water's gonna come out of our house.
I wanna make sure that we don't get in trouble for discussing this after.
I would dis- you know, you know.
Sorry.
No, that's good, no, no, it's, yeah, so, on the nineteenth, we'll, we'll bring that up and we'll address it.
No, don't be. Don't be. Yes.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a good conversation on the nineteenth, for sure. No, don't apologize, one ounce, we're good.
I don't have a hundred thousand, two people's road.
Yeah, no, I don't need that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a good night, have a good night.
Have a nice night. So the next thing on our agenda is Delia Way, and, um, we had a vote on October third, which was a unanimous vote to put Delia Way on our agenda, and then it didn't get on our next agenda. And then we just voted on the last meeting to have Delia Way on again. However, and I'm keeping it on, because the, uh, and we just agreed to it when we read the agenda aloud, because, um. This is what we have received today, and this is what we are dealing with somehow, and I'm just gonna read it out loud. Um, hi Danielle, without being present for the previous conversation, but based on what you and Bert have told me, I think it's best to put it on the twelve nineteen meeting. If anyone has particular questions, they can send them into you prior to then, and then on the nineteenth, council, and I will be present. And prepared to provide a status update as well as the answer to applicable questions. Feel free to share this email with the PB members, so, that's the planning board members, so that they know the plan. It can even be announced at the December fifth meeting that any questions can be emailed to you, and we'll have a discussion on December nineteenth to discuss. Let me know if you or the planning board need anything further, thank you, best regards, Cody Hatta, Town Administrator. Sorry, not happening, we're talking about Delia Way, and you guys can ask the planning board your questions, and if we need help, we'll call town council. Um, Cody is not in charge of the elected planning board, so we had motions twice to put this on our agenda, and he cannot do that. Does anybody disagree with that?
According to Cody, I guess, from what I heard from Bert, he wants, you're supposed to have town council here when you talk about Delia Way.
Why?
But, I don't know, that's what, uh, that's what he's saying.
So, I don't, I don't, I don't, that, that Cody doesn't, if Cody wants to, that doesn't make any sense.
I know.
If, 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 uh, if somebody who lives in our town asks to be on our agenda and discuss something.
Who, who asked to be in the agenda?
How many months ago, two?
Michael Jacob, six, Delia Way.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I asked Amy, who was a member of the planning board, if she could get us on the agenda.
Okay.
Since she is a member of the planning board, she has a right to get us on.
Sure, I'm, I'm not saying you can't, it's just, it's been up in the air, it's like, they're putting a Delia Way in the agenda, it's like, why, what's going on? You know, that's.
We're gonna tell you.
Okay, all right, good, good.
We have good news.
Oh, yeah.
So we're having a discussion on Delia Way, because it's our right.
Thank you.
So, recently, what's happened since my first semester, five, Delia Way. What I've done in the interim is, I was able to get in touch with Karen Spelling, cause Kevin, who originally did this whole thing, passed away last year. So she just got approbate, so what's happened in the past couple of weeks is, I said, listen, I'll offer a small amount of money for the lot. And I said I'd be responsible for taking care of the road, but, and we've got it, it's with her attorneys, it's gotten to town council. Um, I think even Cody is aware of it now, and we're trying to move fast, because I wanna get the, the road completed, I actually have SLT onboard for the spring, if I can get this to go through. Um, and, oh god, this is terrible, new hearing, it's, it's horrible, it's echoing in here.
What?
Exactly, um, we have a steel plate on the road, I already, I, I don't have anything agreed upon yet, the planning board has, I was just hoping the covenant could come onto me, so I can get the road done, that's. Like, the whole plan, I just wanna get it done, um, but there's a steel plate. Um, but there's a steel plate on the road now, I guess, for one of the, uh, manholes, you know, steel covers that were underneath the water, you know, went through, we needed to, you know, get plowed, so I'm paying them, you know, twenty one hundred dollars, um, S L T to come up next Monday, just to at least get that repaired for now. So, just, I just wanna get, I wanna get it in front of you guys, I know it has to go in front of town council and stuff on the nineteenth, but I want you guys, everyone to be aware, 'cause I didn't even, Mike didn't even know, I didn't wanna say anything until I knew, um, I was gonna be able to get an agreement done with Karen Spellman, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that.
Are you gonna leave the lot open, or are you gonna, or do you even know?
I might put a garage on it.
Okay.
That's my plan right now, so I need to put a garage.
Okay.
But that's pretty much, I got cars, I got cars and trailers everywhere, I've been collecting cars lately, so.
So will you ever do, do another plan on the nineteenth?
Yeah, I mean, it's already with the town council now, I got my attorney to do it very quickly, um, and she got an attorney, it's, it's really, she just wants to deed it over, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna give it a ten thousand dollars, is, I told her, give it ten grand, I'll take care of the road, it's gonna be a very expensive lot, but.
It's an expensive garage?
It's just an expensive garage, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I just want the road done, I have the means to do it, so it's just, I, okay, get the road done, it's just, so we don't have to.
This is.
Yes, I'm, um.
This is Ben's, uh.
Yeah, just tell her, exactly.
Oh. This, for, for twenty years, we've been battling with this road, you know, because of the way, you know, it's happened. So Bruce is stepping up, so we asked the cooperation of the planning board to help.
I have a hard time believing that we wouldn't cooperate, assuming on the nineteenth, that we have all the necessary requirements, right? Uh, and boy, do I like the path of least resistance on this, so I'm almost hesitant to ask this, but I feel like it needs to be said on the record. Hmm, knowing that that is being done, and knowing that town council or people in this building obviously are aware of this plan.
I generally use to Cody's aware of it.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna call anybody out, I'm just gonna say, people in this building are aware of this project, or the advancements in the project. I'm curious why the string of events of delaying to have this conversation, delaying to have the conversation until the nineteenth, until town council's here. Um, why people voted no to have this on the, um, agenda. Unfortunately, all the answers to that will be speculative, which I have to be careful about, um, on this side of the table. Um, I'm just very curious, and I would like to get some answers as to why, on this side of the table, why that's gone the way that it's gone, I just don't, I don't understand. Like, this is, this is a huge issue for twenty something years, we finally have a solution, and for some reason, this building is telling, ordering us to stop or delay or pause. You know, I said it earlier today, if you smell like fish, you probably handled fish that day, something's fishy, and I don't like it. Sir, your opinion?
Fact.
Okay.
I approached Amy Prue to get me on the agenda.
Yep.
In October, because at that point in time, I did not know Bruce had any intention of coming forward.
Right.
Okay, Amy got me on the agenda, and then things started transpiring, that Bruce was willing to take the whole thing over, but he wasn't prepared to make it public because he was negotiating with, um, Mrs. Spellman.
Mm-hmm.
And putting it all together, that's why I did not come to the next planning board meeting, my apologies.
Well, you weren't on the agenda because they wouldn't put you on.
Yeah, we, we thought, well, then you are, but.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that, that's internal.
Yep.
But, and then, so we got back onto the agenda.
Yeah.
And then, at that point in time, Bruce still be in on what's going on.
Yeah.
So, that's a little clarification.
And then, and then on our agenda here, it's, it's, um, discussion, it's very clear that it's there, and then there's a strike through it, through it.
I'm sorry?
There's a strike through it, as in, don't talk about it.
Strike through.
So, you're like, so when you have a letter, like, when you have a word, and then you have a line through it?
Right?
Yeah, right here.
Who did that?
So, my, this is where I'm saying that, um, if this was new information that you were just delivering to us tonight, like, it was a big surprise, like, hey, guys, guess what, surprise, I got some great news, I wanna announce it here publicly, this is the first time anybody's hearing, breaking news, that's not the case. So, more than two weeks ago, or. Okay, so.
Until now, you didn't really wanna say anything, you wanted to make sure everything was cool.
Right, but this building.
So, I'm not here talking about it, everything's great, and I guess according to town council and Cody, they wanna wait till the next meeting.
Apparently, yeah.
So at least we know what's going on, it sounds great, um, I think, you know, to get the lot released, and when he's, you know, running to this, you know, you have to finish the road and everything, and depends what you wanna do with the lot, you know, if you have the means to finish the road and get rid of everything, and, um, I don't know if it has something to do with you transferring the lot from her, whether you have to, maybe have to post a bond or something, maybe, just to make everybody happy and get the road done in the spring when the flowers are blooming, and everything would be wonderful.
It's not gonna be burning money though, unfortunately, it's a big five grand for a loan to probably.
Oh, yeah?
I guess, yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
That's gotta hold, so.
Just a hypothetical question, is, is there any way since lot six is already, has a covenant on it for Karen Spellman, that that same covenant can be transferred to.
We're having a problem with the covenant, so I think that I'd probably lean towards town council, but if we could get a bond, it would just be better off for everybody in the whole world.
I can see his point, you don't wanna waste five, five thousand dollars, if you can just transfer the covenant.
I live on the road.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, but I think.
This is gonna cost me probably two hundred and thirty grand, I don't know why, I mean, so.
Expensive lot.
It's.
It's a crappy lot too.
What?
My name's Swamakia, I live on eight Delia Way, I'm with Bruce, I, you know, Bruce is doing a, have you been down the road?
Yes.
You're right there, probably if you have, it's a horror shot.
Oh, I know.
I mean, someone's gonna go through it.
Yep.
But whatever, he's doing a great thing, I don't think he should have to jump through hoops to do it, that's my opinion on the whole thing. And, and if he gets a five thousand dollar bond, how long does you guys hold it?
Until it's done, till the road gets released, till the road gets, that gets released.
Yeah, that's a bond, it's, it's, you pay for it, it's, it's insurance.
What if you give him five K?
No, it's, it's insurance policy.
No, 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 he's paying the insurance, he's throwing, he's giving the insurance company five grand.
The lot's worth, they really took the lot on the five grand. It's an insurance policy, no, no, it's different, it's insurance policy.
Was it costing five K out of your pocket just to purchase it?
Yeah, yeah, you have to get it back, it's like, insurance.
Oh, it's insured, it shouldn't be overseas.
It's like going to the country club. Yeah, so, we get, discuss, I just wanted to get it in front of you guys, because I know it wasn't here, I just wanna make sure it gets on the agenda, 'cause I'm so late, I'm gonna try, I just. It's.
We'll make a motion to put it on the agenda again, and actually keep it on the agenda, um, uh, it's Delia Way, December nineteenth.
Yeah, and we'll have town council.
You wanna make the motion?
We'll make a motion to put it on the agenda for the nineteenth.
Okay.
And, uh, we're gonna have Spolely Town Council and Town Administrator here, and hopefully we can straighten it all out, and.
I would like to make sure it's an appointment, not a discussion, 'cause I wanna make sure that, like, we have a hearing, like, I wanna, if we got somebody that's gonna solve this problem, I wanna have it done on the nineteenth.
And he's.
If possible, within guidelines of the bylaws, obviously.
He's gonna be, he's gonna become an able definitive plan that Joe Webb is doing. Okay.
Yeah, Joe, so that's, yeah, Joe has already the plan that he drew up, exactly.
On, on the, on the nine, on the nineteenth, so.
Does that need to be peer reviewed?
We wanna get a, we wanna get a.
Did we do that before?
Yeah, i- i- if you have the plan, you should have, we should make a peer review with P G B engineering.
It's already been an approved plan right before, it's just, the only thing that has been, well, the only thing they have to just check all the drains, everything that has to be done, I'm sure S L T probably has an proposal to finish all that.
Cause he's taking over, he's not doing it.
There is, yeah, I got an proposal from them, and I gotta, I, I'm gonna talk to Steve Hayward, I think he's got a lot of input on this, 'cause the road, so, I'm actually gonna get an appointment, see if I can get, you know, get out with him soon, you know, I'll meet up with him, see if he can walk the road with me.
So what I'm concerned about is, and the reason why, if it does need to go to peer review, I'd rather have it be peer reviewed before the nineteenth, if that's possible, because again, something doesn't smell right. That smells right.
They're gonna make.
Something else doesn't smell, smell right, so, if you come on the nineteenth, and we get all this done, and then we go, okay, great, now we're gonna send this out for peer review, and then it jumps into January. Now, that's another two weeks, for whatever the hell is going on here, gets fingers in cookie jars and stuff, right, for trying to keep it clean, 'cause we're on YouTube. So, at the end of the day, what I'm saying is, is that we're gonna send that planet, we're gonna send that out for peer review, if you come in on the nineteenth, and it's already been peer reviewed.
Yeah, so, set up an account with, um, with us, and we can have P G B engineering or another engineering firm, P R engineer, so we have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted.
So Joe has a plan for him to look at, for Pete, for Pepper.
Joe Webb did the original plan.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I meant with like the conditions that there are now, so if S L T has a proposed, um, set of plant, like, set of, uh, plans or i- itinerary on how to make the road.
Yeah, proposals of what they wanna do to finish it.
Two thousand eighteen, there was, that engineer, they had some options to how to fix the road, either replace patches, or take it all down and, and go, you know, uh, there, there were some options then, until the road, you know, be one or the other. So like I said, I'll talk to Steve, and then we can get a good plan, I know that, um, I know like the retention ponds, they need to be, they're all full of trees, they can all get cleaned out, and so on.
Can we get a motion to change the road to Sylvester Way?
So.
Then I'm gonna put a gate up at the end of the road.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Hundred grand.
Yeah, you make that money back to that car. So here's, just, I, I think, we're gonna circle the wagon here, when I say this, so I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, um, I wanna make sure that no matter who's in attendance at this meeting on the nineteenth, right, when they go, well, it needs to be peer reviewed, you go, got it, right here, and then there's no bull, there's no reason for this to carry on any longer, and then that way, the only thing that anybody can do, and everybody that is involved, and this building is gonna be watching this right now, so it's not gonna be a surprise, so when you come in with extra stuff in your hands, they're gonna know not to even ask for a peer review, 'cause it's already done.
Okay.
And then there's no crap, and if anything else comes to the surface like a dead fish, we'll know between now and nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You know, K-Car Cafe, really, I'm like, I'm fired up right now, I don't know.
I like to say.
They have me in trouble, I think.
I'll tell you.
It must have been anchovy.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, great news, yeah, that's great news, great news.
So, correspondent.
Is he, is he happy now, is he gentleman here?
We have to, we have to finish the meeting, sorry, didn't mean to be rude.
It's all right, there are the. But everything's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
For your time, fine, like.
Yes.
Yes, I am alive.
Pleasant to have you. Very good.
Nice to see you.
It's good.
Yeah, awesome, great news.
Yeah, absolutely. Michael sees, so, thank you.
Danielle?
Yep.
Patty, uh, mail package for planning board from Mark Pierce.
Yeah, so, Mark, I'm not really sure what it is, the water, uh, and where it's from.
And where is, oh, it's right there.
Yep, I couldn't tell you what it is, um, I forgot to give it.
Designed to enlighten us, that one?
Uh, yes, that's it.
Thank you. Um, design, this is correspondence that we received, um, a sketchbook, it says, designed to enlighten you, I don't know what's in here, did you peruse it at all?
I tried to, there is a note there, actually, sorry, it's not, it's a three page letter.
Okay. Written by who? Written, conceived by Mark Pierce, Energy and Transportation Department. Hello, my name is Mark Pierce, just a quick recapitulation, recapitulation, I grew up near the original location of the town blacksmith shop across from Zilla Baker, I think, and his writing is really neat, but it's a little hard to read, can you see that?
This is, this is a tick.
And, I know, right, and historian Jim Baker, Mister, Mister Grand Mayor is, I'm sorry if I'm not reading this correctly, um, is Mertik Strong, and she. Do you wanna give it a whirl?
No.
Yeah? It's really hard to read.
So what's this thing all about?
Yeah, let's get to the basis of the.
Yeah.
Does that say the earth is flat?
America's Intelligence Committee, September fourth, twenty twenty four, six thirty A M.
Uh.
We have killers, thieves, trust, what?
Okay.
Did you show this to anybody in the building? Includes, yeah, 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 we had the news today, oh boy, health, ethics, six town hall, I, I, dear politicians, excellent mobile, school of destruction, school of corruption, school of collusion, school of, should we be reading this all?
No, 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 so it's.
I feel it's like a con capital sometime.
Nah, I mean, he's, doesn't seem like there's a lot of, uh.
Why is this relevant to the planning board?
Says, so I would like, I would like you all to take the time and read all one hundred pages of my handwritten notebook.
Well, we're not gonna do it right now.
By, by idle, by all, I know, all of the town hall members, by all, by, by all, I mean, all of the town hall members, the planning board, the health and safety board, fire chief. School committee, Buzz Around Inc. Took me years to write, took me years to write and learned how to read and write at Halifax Elementary School, and now to locate gravity near a water tower and create a spark. It does, but he also, first of all, stop right now, my name is Mike Pierce, I'm at four, six, one, one, Trimmer Road, number four, twenty two, Killian, Texas.
Okay.
So, uh.
That's very good to know.
Yep. It's, um, I think maybe we hand that off to town council and see if it's even something that we should touch, and maybe have it scanned for.
That's why I didn't touch it.
I know, that's why I'm like.
Gotta wash your hands.
That's what I'm saying. It's, I mean, I don't wanna be disrespectful, it seems like somebody put a lot of time and effort into that, and obviously is very passionate, they're a resident of Halifax originally, right? Um, it seems like there's a lot of stuff in there that's, uh.
Why'd they send it to us, that's the question.
Above our pay grade.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's above my pay.
The question is.
Yeah.
So on the packaging, it didn't say why they sent it to us?
No, all the planning board.
Huh.
I'd like to, I'd like to pass this, oop, sorry Danielle, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I said it cost me thirteen dollars to get it, so.
I wonder if they sent it to other ones?
So what I would do is, just in case, just to cover our tracks, I would, um, recommend that we forward it over to the selectmen.
Okay.
Just so that it's on their hands, or in their.
I'll make a motion to send it over to the selectmen.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be rude in a way of, of dismissing it, 'cause the gentleman put a lot of time and effort into it, but it's above our pay grade, and.
Maybe, maybe the historical association too.
Absolutely.
Society, whatever.
Yeah, so, we'll hand it to the selectmen with the idea of maybe they can decipher what it means, and if it's appropriate, and if it is appropriate, they can hand it down to the historical committee, and if it's not appropriate, then we have to deal with it in the way that we would handle anything that's inappropriate.
Okay.
And that was my motion, by the way.
Okay, so, do I?
Just question, reading it, and been a, been a, so please for a while too, you might wanna get that to them first, 'cause to be in cases like this, could, if there was an issue.
Yeah, right.
Good time is always of the essence, right, so, just a recommendation that they look at that.
Oh.
First to make sure that.
On its way to the selectmen, it stops off at the police station.
There you go.
And then we ask the chief if it's okay, if he deems it okay, then he passes it off to the selectmen, and if not, then he takes care of it as, as the law enforcement should.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we take the package that we received, um, and attempted to read, to the best of our ability, passed off to the chief of police, which it does ask that that is said in that list of people, uh, chief of police, and if the chief of police deems it safe to pass it along to the selectmen, to then decide what to do with it.
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, aye.
All right, aye.
All right.
Okay, and then we have a bill?
Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Uh, express newspaper dated twelve, five, twenty four, for three hundred.
Uh, express newspaper dated twelve five twenty four, for three hundred Plymouth Street, Cape Cod Cafe, Jeremy Jamulus, and the amount of ninety dollars.
Motion to pay that?
Motion to pay that, invoice A one four three seven one C L.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Does anybody have anything else that they want to discuss, right? Anybody else, no?
No, we're good.
Okay, all right.
Just say, learn a lot from coming to you twenty one.
I know, we've been really, yeah.
It's entertaining.
Except for you, good thing.
Yeah.
Except for that.
That's kinda freaky.
You can read it if you want.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Can I have the bill then? All right, well, um, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, all those in favor? Aye.